This meeting is now called for water. We'll call Madam Clerk.
Trustee Williams.
Present.
Trustee Brooks.
Present.
Trustee Jenkins-Bell.
Present.
Trustee Franklin.
Present.
Trustee Vogel.
Present.
Trustee McMoore.
Present.
And Mayor Rudin.
Here.
Trustee, I think. May I have a thinking? Please. Good flag, United States of America and to the Father, for which he stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I make the trustees make a motion to move into executive sessions for purposes of litigation imminent or probable for five minutes.
We need a motion to amend the agenda to allow for a closed session. Not pending your probable litigation for two minutes of the automatic effect.
Well, she said she had to amend the agenda, move to executive session for purposes of litigation probable.
I say that.
Executive question. We'll call.
Trustee Williams.
Aye.
Trustee Brooks.
Both aye.
Trustee Jenkins-Bell.
Both aye.
Trustee Franklin.
Aye.
Trustee Vogel.
Aye.
Trustee McMoore.
Both aye.
And Mayor Rudin.
Both aye.
And we're about to go to close session. Can we have the pass the crowd to leave for five minutes while we do an executive session?
You turn on Emma.
Again, thank you for your patience and understanding. Okay. Madam Clerk approval of the minutes. I indeed.
You may remember to recognize that I don't have a mic without a microphone loud. Need a motion? Okay. Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. So you can hear me?
No.
On my?
You need a mic.
Okay, Mayor. I would like to make a motion to combine all the minutes of April 23rd, May 28th, June 1st, and June 11th for a vote. Make that motion. Okay. All time questions. Madam Clerk, we'll call.
Trustee Williams.
Here we go. Both aye.
Trustee Brooks.
Both aye.
Trustee Jenkins-Bell.
Both aye.
Trustee Franklin.
Both aye.
Trustee Vogel.
Aye.
Trustee McMoore.
Both aye.
I concur. Both aye. All right, thanks very much. Let me know if you're ready. Now, give a public comment. Our first one will be Ammon Nickerson.
Good evening, board. Good evening, community. My name is Ammon Nickerson. I wanted to come back up here from the last time I was here just to clear up a few things I was not given an opportunity to speak on in relation to city state and my personal involvement. So just to clear up the matter, at the time, me being from this community, 24 years old, my development company along with two of my partners, Chicago Development and Acquisitions, we purchased the land and developed the way and then sold that property to a larger development company, Fryman &amp; Johnson. They became the managing partners on that development. Our company stayed on as a equity partner in that development. So at that time, we already had sold property, the development and the project, and we were no longer in control of that property or that development. Now, as everyone in this room, everyone on this board knows that in 2007 and 2008, there was a global credit crisis, that many people lost their jobs, their homes, banks needed to get bailed out. The three largest car manufacturers in America needed to get a bank bailout. So as everyone was affected by that, that development was, and it was foreclosed on. Foreclosed means that the bank takes your property back. You are no longer the owner of that property. And so that's exactly what took place in that time. Now, this is 2019, and I'm here because there's been defaming going on, not just for myself, but some of the board members up here as well have been defaming on things of misinformation and ignorance regarding. So I came here because I was not given an opportunity last time to speak on these things. And since then, there has once again been some defaming going on, okay? So I just wanted to come here to set the record straight so we can just put that to rest. And if anyone has personal wants to ask me a question, then you can see me personally about that. But I just want to make sure that we have our facts straight because I'm not the individual to, that you want to defame, not from a threatening standpoint, but the fact that I'm from here and that I'm the individual that you will want your children to grow up to be like, who comes back and invests in their community, okay? As you know, Mayor Rudin, I mentored and also coached your kids along with you while I was in college. So these are some of the things of involvement that I've had in my community from the beginning. So myself and this like Coach Tutu, Trustee Tutu, we're from here, we grew up here. We want our children to be just like us when we come back and continuously work in our communities. So once again, I just wanted to have the opportunity to speak on these matters just so we don't have any people out in the community defaming or trying to, you know, smear anyone in the news in the community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Professor. Percy Scott.
Good evening, Mayor and trustees. I appreciate your time. My name is Percy Scott. I am the president of Global 360 Marketing and I'm also the executive director of Chamber 57, which represents the villages of University Park, Olympia Fields, Park Forest, Madison, Ariston Park. University Park has always been a proud member of Chamber 57. I'd like to formally congratulate you on your new election, you becoming mayor, so I want to thank you for that. I'm also here to, as a friend of Ammon Nickerson. Ammon has been a friend of mine for over 10 years. His business has always been upstanding. He's always been an upstanding fellow in the community. As a friend, as a friend, he's been good as a business partner and as a businessman, he's always been good. I've done several business transactions with Ammon and I've never had any issues. So if there's a credibility question, I can vouch for Ammon that he has always done good business when it relates to me, when it relates to my company, when it relates to people that I have referred to him. So he has always done good business. Secondly, I want to say that, again, he's from this community. We should be proud of someone who's trying to give back and build up this community. As chairman of Chamber 57, I'm the executive director of the chamber, we want economic development and to have somebody to build up our community from our community should only be uplifted and it shouldn't be torn down by people from within the community. I see a lot of cameras here today and I know a lot of people are here for the water. And so I would trust that everyone that gets up here in the village worked on something that's a fixed expedition and with respect because the cameras come out when things are wrong, I want to see them out here when things are right. And so I want to make sure that as we're talking tonight, that we talk with professionalism and I hope that what happened earlier today can just be an isolated event. Having us stand outside for 10 minutes, I've never seen that for a meeting. This meeting is once a month and you all have a month to talk amongst yourselves. The meeting should start at seven o'clock. It should start at seven o'clock. So that's just my opinion. Thank you.
AC.
Hello, everybody. I'm AC Green. I'm the host of the AC Green Show. Hope you listen to the show. We're on V103, SO106.3, it's virtually 1390 across the entire escape of Chicago. We have 1.8 billion listeners. We built that show to empower people so that people would have a voice. And we did it against, you know, what many of the executives in the media industry said we could not do because they said that African-Americans by and large would want to just, you know, hear music, shake their ass and drink more liquor. But we showed them different. Going on 11 years, we have that eliciting audience and we're at the same time that they're having a good time and partying and people have a good time. They're losing their house, the campaigns and mortgage, credit issues. So we speak to those issues. You have many listeners in University Park and so many homes have been saved in University Park right away. So the bottom line is, this young man, Ammon Nickerson, who's been on my show many, many, many times, you know, I don't come out to do these things. I'm a political guy to some extent, you know, I wrote the jingle for President Barack Obama. Yes, we can, I wrote that. For many years, I was a political, but I don't let politicians on my radio show listen good, never. Because I want only honest, direct, solution-based things to happen. What Ammon is a part of now is about a solution to what I already know is a big problem and you know it too. So what we need to do is we need to embrace, not only him because I knew his mother, the whole nine yards, mother passed away, God rest her soul, but for us to reject anything or to smear anybody that is doing things on the righteous side. What signal does that send to all the young folks who are trying to do, they're already just ingratiated and feeling that way. What we gonna do now? So we have an obligation. I appreciate all of you, Mayor, I respect to you and everybody here, but the bottom, and I'm not a resident of University Park. But if I could say this overall to all that listening and take it back to your cities, the elected official are the service of the people and not the other way around. And the people, and I say it on the radio show, so nothing I'm saying here, I don't say on air. When we start to serve elected officials, we already got it backwards. We cannot talk about Trump on the top of you and be doing the same thing on the bottom of you. All politics is local when it comes down to it. Now, we've already celebrated Ammon doing this. So it's already in the light of day. Don't bring darkness to this. I love you, I do. And everything I'm saying is out of a deep sincere care for black people. We gonna do better. We gonna, this gonna, this gonna work and we gonna support it 1,000% and make sure any resource that are needed to make sure this happens well, including putting people in those homes, we gonna do it.
Thank you much.
Thank you very much.
Corey Blanchard.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening. Good evening, board trustees. Thanks for the opportunity. Come here tonight and provide you with an update. You know, I said here on the 22nd, we had a meeting here and you hosted and I said it takes at least a few weeks to resolve this issue that we're having with the water and it's coming out to be true. You know, it's been about four weeks now and I think it's still gonna be a few more weeks before we're able to resolve this. So since the last time we've met with you, I think I was at your last board meeting giving an update, I want to give you another update tonight and afterwards I'll stick around. Anybody has any questions after the board meeting, I'm happy to answer them. So we've made some progress through comprehensive testing. We've tested over 1,000 samples in the village limits. We've lifted several areas from the Do Not Consume Advisory. We lifted 22 homes last week and we're in the process this week of lifting another 250 homes. Those customers have gotten sample bottles. They've got a criteria with IEPA in order to lift them and working through the information center here that you've kindly provided for us, we've gotten a number of those samples back and we're working to help get those folks lifted. So thank you for your continued cooperation. So customers that have questions on their current status, if the question, the customer wants to know, am I on the list or not on the list, they should have received a notification from us. But at any time, if you have a question, they can either go to the website at waterfaxil.com or if they just want to call our customer service call number, we're happy then to have our customer service reps look up their individual parcel and tell them whether or not they're included in the area or they're excluded in the area so that people can have certainty with their parcel. We're also completing regular water testing and sharing those results on the website. One thing I want to bring your attention to is you'll notice on the website, we've got the first week, first three weeks of samples and then we have this week's round of samples. Working with the IEPA and going through all of our sample sites, we discovered there were six sites that had homes that were post-construction for 1990. We worked by removing those and we've worked with residents to add more sample sites that are pre-1986 construction. Right now, due to the cooperation of village residents, what we used to have is 40 sample sites throughout the village, now we have over 80 sample sites. So that gives us a much better representation of what's going on in the system. So thank you to the residents of University Park for that. So moving forward, when you look at the website, you're gonna notice that from week four moving forward, those results are gonna be compared to each other because that represents the much higher customer participation, okay? So far, in this process, we've distributed 35,000 cases of water, 800 faucet filters here at the information area, 2,500 water filter pitchers and hundreds of free water testing kits. We're also working every day to ensure that customers have access to safe drinking water. Homebound customers can call us and we will bring them water to their home. I've had some concerns in the public from, hey, I didn't get the water, somebody put it on the porch and somebody took it. If you call us, we'll bring it to you, okay? We want to make sure people know that. Some other things that we've heard of the community, information I want to share and misinformation I want to kind of clear up of what you can do with your water. And Melissa Kahun's gonna pass out some myths and facts, things to you that are gonna be available after the meeting over here for everyone that wants one. But related to water, here's what I want folks to know. According to the filter manufacturer, the water filters distributed by Aqua remove 99% of lead. These filters are also certified to do so by the National Sanitation Foundation. So any filter you look and get you buy or you have should have that accreditation on it. You can drink, brush your teeth and with these water filters and use the instructions. There's a filter in there that has to be replaced periodically when you provide those filters. So if you're using the filter, you can do anything you would normally do with your water, okay? And we need folks to do that because in order for the treatment process to incorporate to be successful, folks have to use their water as normal in order for that pipe to get coated. According to the EPA, flushing your pipes reduces lead in your drinking water. Now, the test samples that we've taken, and again, we've taken 1,000 of tests on this water, indicates that running your faucet for two or three minutes drops the lead level in the home down by below IEPA levels 97% of the time, okay? If you run your water two to three minutes, if you're using the faucet filter, it is going to be safe to consume. We recommend you flush your pipes to reduce the lead exposure, again, two to three minutes before you use it. But again, we're handing out the filters, they're here for you if you need them. If you flush your pipes, you can use it for your shower, washing your dishes, doing laundry, all of these instances are safe. And it's not just me saying that, it's the EPA, it's the CDC, it's all those organizations. We encourage folks to visit our website. We're updating it almost daily with information so folks got the most updated information there. I know we have a document that we're gonna provide to the village that if you request it, you can put on your website that kind of talks about the situation, what we're doing to resolve it. I just encourage folks, but we've got great information. If you've got questions, come on in here. I was here Sunday working all day, talking with customers and meaning of answering their questions. We're happy to answer the questions. Just give us a call or pop in here and we'll do the best that we can. Again, Mayor, thank you for the time. I'll stick around after the meeting, Ms. Kahun will as well. If anybody has any questions, we're happy to answer them.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Ray. Deborah James-Drow.
Good evening, Mayor, board, all present, all viewing. I stand here tonight asking any University Park senior citizen member of the committee to stand. Okay. It's a few of us, but yet and still, have a seat ladies. Yet and still, though it's a few of us, we are celebrating this year as our 25th anniversary of the Senior Citizens Committee. December of 1993, village president Vernon Young took the vision from Barbara Lewis, who was the director of community development. From her vision of seniors getting together for a meet and greet and eat, we are going to have a gala of a 25-year senior fund day on August 28th at noon, right here at 90 Town Center. Now, as I look at the board members, I can think of one, two, three, four, five, six. I've seen all of you all's faces at our senior fund day, okay? Sorry, attorney, I'm not familiar with you yet, but I expect to see you, okay? It will be, it's always the last Wednesday in August, again, August 28th, starting at 12:00 noon. We always make sure we feed 55 and over seniors, but we gladly accept $5 from anybody who's under 55. So we always target that group to invite them more than all of us over 55 because that's how we replenish our account. But at the end of the meeting, since we're really trying to be expansive for this gala, anybody, I have an envelope, right now it's a blank envelope, but after the board meeting, we are accepting donations towards that gala. To you, $5 may seem small, but to us, it's a donation, okay? So hope to see everyone there. We will have our flyers. We're still critiquing some of our logistics of our program. The date will be, the date is August 28th, last Wednesday of the month in August, starting at 12:00 noon. We have fun, we have dancing, we have old people music. We do all of, some of it, you know, we do some of the line dancing that we're still able to do, but it's a good time and right now for what's going on in this community, this is one day you need to come out, meet, greet, eat, enjoy. Remember that everybody that are residents in the community, we all need to take that woo-sah moment. Oh, that was a good time. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Drow.
Good evening, Mayor and board trustees and Phyllis Sanders. I have a question about the ravine under Black Hawk that goes onto Union Drive. I was wondering if that has been or if it could be cleaned out because there's a lot of overgrowth in that area causing a lot of mosquitoes and the last heavy, heavy rain we had, I don't think there was a lot of drainage going on because it all drained my house, I think. But yeah, that could be cleaned out. The other thing is, I'm understanding that we're getting our fire hydrants replaced and that was a question I had had before. There were many that were in disrepair and I was just wondering, does that have any lead in it? Is there any problems with the fire hydrants that will cause our lead problem? And that's all I have, just those two questions. Thank you.
Ms. Sanders, I did speak with Director Byers. The mosquito Clark has started last night. In fact, I heard him. I will bring it to the attention because there's a swell back in Old Forge Lane where they did last night, they followed our directives and came up and sprayed a little extra, they slowed down. We'll make that same mark over there as well.
What were you talking about?
Yes, ma'am. And actually, I think part of the problem was when I did inquire, because I had the same question you did, I think it was just a matter of them having the time to get over there and with, and which it makes sense to try to do it before the, everything greened up because it makes it more difficult to cut and so forth. But I will definitely bring that back to his attention. I think what it was, it was just the timing of things and then the rain and so forth because, you know, if you cut with the saw on wet wood, it makes it much more difficult. So I think that's what it more, more of their problem was. So we'll make sure, especially with the spray, we'll deliver that message to them.
And I'm sure you could address Mr. R. Blanchard's having a meeting. Gina Williams.
Good evening, everyone. I truly want to make mention of us having to step outside for executive session. My understanding is that executive session is normally after the meeting and not before. This is the second time it's happened. We have people that have canes, hip replacement, other significant medical issues and let's face it, it's warm now, but pretty soon it's gonna be cold and we're not gonna have this type of weather. So I hope that that practice does not continue and if it does, please keep it concise because it's unfair for us to come in here, get comfortable, and then have to go right back outside the doors. Y'all have from this meeting to the next meeting to get it together, whatever y'all need to talk about. So this last minute stuff is for the birds. I don't appreciate it. The other thing I want to make mention are my forias. I'm not getting them on time, Dee, and then when I'm getting them, you're giving me totally different information. I even explained to you at the last meeting, I wanted Mr. Diamond's bill. You bring up to me Montana and Welch. Okay, I'm not asking about who the mayor had. I know who she had. Okay, but you brought it to me. You made mention of Montana and Welch to me over here. I couldn't care less about Montana and Welch if I'm putting in a foria for Mr. Diamond. So I would like my forias on time. I put in two, never got them back. That was like late May, early June and I put in two more and I would like my results given to me in the same fashion that you would give anyone else. So I would appreciate that. I also want to make mention of that huge bill that was brought up last board meeting, 17-7. That's ridiculous. I don't care if they had to get on their knees and cut that grass with scissors. Seventeen thousand, $700 for three days of work is utterly ridiculous. We still haven't seen the budget. You still don't know what we're working with, but we spending money like we got it coming out of the Yazoo. Well, we don't. So we need to get that together with. Also, I noticed on the last meeting that this young man here came and he got the votes he needed, but you sat there and you said, "I'm stronger than you." That to me was a form of intimidation. That was not right. And yes, I heard it and I can read lips like a man can read hips. So I heard what I heard and it was disgraceful. That should not be the way we conduct business. We're not gonna bring that type of mentality out here. You can look and stare, but yes, I heard it and I know others heard it and it was wrong. Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a comment on your first comment that you made.
My, you're in my. You cannot hear me.
Mayor, I'd be recognized. Okay, thank you. I would like to make a comment in reference to that impromptu little executive session that was brought to the whole board at the last minute. So normally, we don't have that, like you mentioned, but that was brought to our attention at the last minute.
Who brought it?
Mayor Rudin. And so we, we. And so, we, we act, we wanted to afford him the opportunity to do that, but I did not know it would put so much, you know, pressure on everybody, so we did do what he asked us to do. It was Mayor Rudez who mentioned that, okay?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
The proper person to direct it to is, uh...
Good evening, Mayor, Board of Trustees, gotta figure out what we might be talking to. Is there some of your stuff? But, uh, but anyway, the proper thing is to say, "Good evening, Mayor and Board and to the listening audience." I want to caution you people, um, your board and everybody else, that we think through things that you are doing here and accusing this person of that person of this person. There are some people who are very observant, and there's an old adage, it's called fly in the buttermilk. Now, we all know that buttermilk is already sour milk, and if a fly gets in it, it's really, really bad. So, let's think about this. Things do happen, and would happen sometime, strictly, I know it happens around my house, happened to me today, I got hung up on, what, 294, but these things happen. But flies in the buttermilk, be careful that you don't get drowned along with it. And me, I don't want to. Okay, so that's, that's think things through, that's think about what you're gonna say before you say it, and, and really, really investigate it. Okay?
With you here? Tara Lawson?
Good evening, Mayor, Clerk, Trustees, and to all the department heads, and to all of my fellow residents, thank you for this opportunity to speak before you. I just wanted to share some things that were really on my heart, um, and things that are going on in our community. I want to say, first of all, about the decorum. Uh, I know on many occasions, uh, our Clerk Dee has shared with us, uh, about decorum, and I just want to remind us to be respectful of each other. Uh, you know, when we come up here to talk, um, that we're not talking back there, because it's my turn. So, when it's your turn and you're up here, then the rest of us are listening. I want to ask that you use the mic as well, so that we can hear you clearly. And, um, you know, we're going through a real crisis here, uh, which should bring us closer together. You know, when my family and I experience a crisis, it does bring us close together. Um, I want to work with all of the trustees, the mayor, and anyone in our community to help make our community better. I offer my services, I offer my gifts, my talents, uh, for the betterment of our community. And when we all do that, we'll be made better. And I, hey, I'm not stuck on stupid, I know that there are things that go on that really make us angry, that really upset us, but, uh, let's kind of just draw together and, um, work together to make our community better. And then I just want to say to each of the trustees, uh, at the heart of being a trustee is that the people trust you to serve. You ran for office, you were elected, I ran for office, I was not elected. So, having said that, when I contact you, I'm needing your help with an issue. I want to hear what you think about an issue. Now, if you turn around and you get mad at me because I'm contacting you, there's a problem, because you are the elected official. I trust you to serve, and I think if you remember that, uh, it's service that you're giving. You ran to serve this community, not just me as an individual, but the community as a whole, and I, as a part of the community, want to help you do that, and I offer that to you. And so, I just wanted, um, remind you of that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Lawson. I'll speak for Bernard Alsberg, the third.
Hello, Mayor, Trustees. I'm Mr. Bernard Alsberg. I've been living in, uh, I've been living in University Park since 1984. Um, I known Amy Martin for 32 years now, so I don't want to beat a dead horse on the things he's trying to do out here. I just feel like personally, feels that it's odd that we're just trying to condemn this young man and throw things out that are not true. Being since 1984, I know a lot of people, and that's why I let you all know as officials that. Be careful of the things you do. Stuff gives back to me, stuff gives back to my father. I got a lot of friends in the clubhouse, that own the clubhouse, which you know about. I'm not liking what I'm hearing. I'm a little upset about what I'm hearing. I put time, I don't even live out here anymore, I live in Manteno. Uh, I play college ball, play professional ball, I've been back here coaching for the last five years, and I came back before that, five years ago for that. When I was here, the trustees I knew, you would know them down the street. I'm not sure if the kids out here would know you, but they, they ain't sure know me or Tootsie walking down the street. That's a problem. They should know you. I don't want to, I hope it's not the fact you guys are officials that have a title. Like you said, you're here to serve, and not serve yourself. All right? Joey, go a little way back, I know a lot about you, you know a lot about me. Let's just do everything the right way. I'm leaving it at that. Thank you.
All right. All right. Good evening, Board, Mayor. I had a conversation with you about, uh, three or four weeks ago, a two-hour conversation. And I noticed that... Did you hear me?
No.
Okay. Now, okay, you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, about three, four weeks ago, we had a two-hour conversation about the things you wanted to do in University Park. I want to know that, are you allowing the past committee people to reapply for the position? Because my name wouldn't know no, you would serve especially, your special request committee at all?
You can apply anytime.
Okay.
You just haven't reached out to me since then.
Well, you have it on the list here.
Yeah, at least, yeah.
Okay, so I'll put it out.
No problem.
And, uh, what about the finance committee? Do I have to reapply?
Yeah, that'd be fine, reapply. I don't have a problem whatsoever.
Okay. Another question is the youth development club, have you made any decisions as to what you want to do it? Would it, uh, because that facility over there is about 30% completed.
We're not here or working yet.
Okay, all right, can you hear me now?
Can you announce?
Okay, I'm talking about the youth development center, uh, owning Town Center. I want to know, uh, how far have, are you gonna go with it? Are you gonna, uh, try to put it over in barn area, or are you gonna continue with the, uh, construction of it, uh, at the, uh, at the youth center over here?
Those are one of the items that the board...
Mike, just speaking of Mike. Here, here.
Those are one, that's one of the items that our city council, our board of trustees are gonna discuss at our upcoming retreat.
Okay, because I don't, I don't want to have the village waste the money that was already spent over there, and you mentioned that you want to put it in the barn area over there, and we may have problems with it, because construction problems, so it may cost a lot of money to get somebody to check it out. Okay? That's it. Thank you, Mr. Travel.
You're welcome.
That ends our public comment section. New business, first, second, and third reading and ordinance of the Village of University Park, amending Title 10, Title 6, Chapter 1060, Section 1060 dash 06 of the Village of University Park Code of Ordinance. Is there a motion?
So, move.
Move by trustee Brooks, second by trustee Williams. Questions?
Yeah. Mayor, um, if the trustees can turn to page three, um, maybe counsel, uh, can help me on this one. And, and just, uh, sort of matter of opinion, um, I do think that, uh, this is a, well, first of all, let me read it. Um, this is, this ordinance is in reference to garbage cans that are out in front of the property, and, uh, this ordinance would ask, it actually would put a change to it, and let me just read this. Section 2, uh, Item D, all garbage refuge recycling containers shall be stored, should not be stored in the front yard on non-trash days. Um, those same, shall be stor, should be stored behind a privacy fence or out of view from curbside. In most, uh, of our communities, the upscale communities, they do do that. Um, I just want, well, the reason why I ask is that I don't store mine, I take mine and I push it off to the side, maybe about, about five feet back on the side of the house. So, um, I was on the way here, um, just trying to figure out how we can make sure that it is fair. There are people who really don't have a place to store those big cans, because they are huge. Um, most people, and, and I heard Ms. Morgan is very correct, some, you can put them in the garage. Um, some people can't, you know, don't have space in the garage, so I'm, I just don't want to kind of get to people, but I, I, I agree, I'm, some people should not have, you know, the garbage can in front is, in some communities, you know, and, and by the way, this was not from any of the board members, if I'm not mistaken, this comes from code enforcement?
That's my understanding.
Yeah, this is not by any, by the way, this is none of us, so, you know, it's, it's not, uh, any official trying to, uh, hurt the people, but, um, if, yeah, if we, because my main concern, it is up for a first, second, and third reading. Can we, you know, is it sitting on the side with the way most people do it, when they drag it around on the side of the house? The question would be, would they get a citation for that? Do we have to build a privacy fence? Those are the things I want to make the question about this.
My reading of the intent of the ordinance is that would not occur. If we need to, and if the board wishes, we can, um, we could amend the language to so that it would be allowed, that it could be on the side of the house for those homes that do not have a privacy fence. Uh, but it's, and my reading of it is that the true intent of it is to stop people from having the garbage, like, out on, essentially out on the curb or in front of the, the very edge of the house.
Right. Well, then, uh, can I make a motion that we do, or at least, uh, make it a, uh, first and second reading? Make a motion, we, so that you can do it, yeah, can I, I make a motion that we make it a first and second reading, um, and allow counsel to work with the language, so that we can, uh, uh, make sure it benefits everyone when it comes to, uh, this garbage can.
Motion by trustee Brooks, second by trustee Bowden. Questions? Roll call.
Trustee Williams. Both sides. Trustee Brooks. Both sides. Trustee Jenkins-Bell. Both sides. Trustee Franklin. Both sides. Trustee Bowden. I. Trustee McCallum. Both sides. And Mayor Reed. Both sides.
Now, this motion would be to accept the first, the amendment, just do a first and second reading. Is there a motion for first and second reading? Item F2C, appoint Mr. Mayor's Office of Special Events. Uh, with the concurrence of the board of trustees, I'm appointing the following individuals to the Mayor's Office of Special Events, Bowdoin Bell Martin, Linda Rudez, Deborah Stroud, Natalia Hill, and Torian Morton. Questions? Associate Members Anthony Peppler, Karen Lewis, Reginald Hill, Sandy Hill, Vanessa Lawson, Steve, and Tamika Harry. Is there a motion?
So, move. Second.
Move by trustee Brooks, second by trustee Williams. Question? Roll call.
Trustee Williams. Both sides. Trustee Brooks. Both sides. Trustee Jenkins-Bell. Both sides. Trustee Franklin. Both sides. Trustee Bowden. Both sides. Trustee McCallum. Both sides.
Both sides. Item F2C, motion to approve the appointment, standing for as the prosecutor and hearing officer. Is there a motion?
So, move. Second.
Move by trustee Brooks, second by trustee Williams. Questions? Roll call.
Trustee Bowden. Both sides. Trustee Brooks. Both sides. Trustee Jenkins-Bell. Both sides. Trustee Franklin. Both sides. Trustee Bowden. Both sides. Trustee McCallum. Both sides.
Both sides. Those are all of our action items. Item F2D, a discussion and orders amending Part 8, Title 4 of the Village of University Park Code of Orders, creating a motor fuel tax. Open for discussion, board.
I'll go first. All right, um, Mayor, um, I, I just, um, I know that, um, you know, that I think this is, is, is a good idea, um, but just, just a little concerned about the timing of doing it, when the governor just signed, uh, the motor fuel tax to raise. Um, I, I, our, our motor fuel tax funds have doubled, uh, with him doing it, so instead of the village getting 250 now, it should be a little bit over 500. And actually, we, what I'm glad is that, um, uh, we had caught the misuse, uh, when you had the previous village manager, she caught the misuse of those MFT funds, that's the nickname of it, it was mismanagement of it. We won't say who, because you'll find out probably later on, but they were taking that money and using it for payroll. Yeah, and so, that money was frozen, and when we got in, we were, we had to beg, 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 and the state finally released it. So, uh, but now, we will double the money, the money is gonna double. Um, I'm just a little concerned that if we pass this, uh, we'll make a hypothetical, if it's $3 at speed, or, excuse me, if it's $3 at BP, but we have $3.03 at Speedway, where you think they're gonna go? So, I, I mean, I'm just concerned about the, the 3, 3 cent, maybe we can just take a pause on it, that's just...
It's 3 cent on the paper, but...
It's 2 cent, oh. Well, yeah, I, I get, yeah, I...
It's already 2 cent, raise the penny. So, is it, my understanding that the purpose would be, the additional revenue would be, uh, applied to road, to the road?
Right, to, right. Right, so I, I just asked that, since our MFT funds will double with the, uh, fuel tax that the governor signed, if we could just take a quick, you know, take a pause, but this would be something later down the line, but that is helpful, because our money just doubled for road projects in University Park. So, I'm just giving my opinion, my, uh, on what I believe, that I, I just think we should pause one, because, uh, if anything, let's at least grab BP and bring them into the loop, so we can get motor fuel tax for that, um, and collect money, because they're, they're really getting off by...
Yeah, I, I, 85% of our residents shop there, and we get nothing from there.
Right.
And the whole intended purpose by raising the penny is to, we can apply those funds to repair some of our, of roads, our roads are in disrepair, they need not just bandages anymore, they need surgery, and they need to be repaired properly, so that would be the intention of raising our motor fuel thing from 2 cent to 3, raising it 1 penny, basically, that's, that's the intended purpose, and this is not an action item tonight, this is an item open for discussion.
Right. Oh, so, okay, because I was reading it.
Yeah, yeah, this is just a discussion, no action on this.
Right, right.
Action is done for the evening.
No, 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 I'm, I'm, I'm referencing to what I was reading, Mayor. So, that, that penny is a cor, is, is the addition to what the governor?
Right.
Oh, okay.
Yes, yes, trustee.
So, how does that BP figure in with Speedway, and how would it...
And how would it impact the residents of University Park?
Let me tell you about that BP.
Okay.
That BP does nothing but take the residents of University Park's dollars. We provide police and fire service for it, we get nothing from them whatsoever.
Is it my understanding that BP is annexed to Crete?
They're not in University Park, they're in unincorporated Will County.
Yes. But annexed to Crete, township, right?
No, no, unincorporated Will County. And it is maybe our intention to look at it, to see if we can do an annexation to get them in. Because eighty-five percent of our residents shop there. A lot of people don't like Speedway, BP is preferred gas, and they get away scot-free. They don't participate in community events, they don't participate in anything. They just participate in taking out money and going off about their way. And it's time for that stuff to stop.
So is it my understanding that they are benefiting?
Benefiting themselves, the proprietorcy, that's about it.
All right. Mayor, may I be recognized?
Trustee.
Also, too, it just also popped in my mind, little burnt out from football all morning.
Get used to it.
Yeah, tomorrow's going to be worse. This also, I want to say, Mayor, for the public, with our TIF seven, if those who don't know, TIF seven, that's right there, I-57, if you come off, it is the northwest...north...northwest corner? Am I saying northeast corner? I do think that development, we're supposed to start this year, or... Because I do know a gas station is supposed to... Yes, yeah, it's supposed to start this year. If we can just...I...I just...just giving my opinion, if we just hold off a second, allow the impact of what, I mean, 1 penny, I know it's 1 penny, but it goes a long way, you know. But let's also, you know, let's let the residents, you know, at least know that their pan... That the motor fuel tax funds has doubled with the price of the impact of the gas that just came in, so. But definitely with the development, I don't think...I think we would definitely bring in the revenue once that gas station comes up in TIF seven.
And trustee, anything but decides to put additional real estate taxes on the residents. The residents deserve to have a clean, good road. So, you know, it's just for discussion, this is an open discussion to the residents to participate and ask to hear what's going on, so.
I think it's helpful for them to know our thoughts.
This is C.L.W., right?
Is it more? What's that, Mr. Morgan?
Basic.
Yes, Mr. Morgan.
Okay, trustee Bro, what are you saying about the TIF?
Thank you, please, Mrs. Morgan.
What are you saying about the TIF seven? Just what's going on over there? You say something about a gas station being open, but I hear in your voice you sounded hesitant. Is there something going on that should not be, or is there something that you're not involving to us?
No, no, you probably be...you probably misreading me. What I was hesitant is about passing the gas tax right now. I feel that we should wait, especially if...because we're going to have four gas stations at that point. Hopefully five with the BP. So my point is, is that, and like the mayor said, this is only up for discussion. So the hesitation you hear is the hesitation to pass another tax with the gas.
Okay, and I think that's the test to show me also, with the motor fuel, is there something to do with the roads or something?
Correct.
Okay, we need roads done like ten years ago. Why people procrastination, what is that? Why not let it get...on my street alone, but forget about Great Fire. But just on our state alone, you have school buses, you have CTA buses, you have the teachers, the principals, you have children going up and down to there. It's radish that has solid life. Why not let them take some kind of money and fix some of these streets? Because things that I've seen, if you go ahead and do it, something else comes up and it won't get done. We need roads fixed like, like I said, 10 years ago. My car is getting tore every day, anybody else? Okay, so why are we waiting? Forget about waiting to...whatever comes, will come, but we need some help like right now. This is an emergency.
Ms. Morgan, I think, I actually think maybe you misinterpreted what trustee Brooks was saying. And maybe I didn't, so if I'm wrong, I'm wrong. On July 1, the law changed in the state of Illinois in regards, there are several taxes that were passed. What I interpret trustee Brooks is asking, is to, let's see, he's asking the board to see what the impact is of the taxes that have been increased as of July 1 before the board acts and does another penny increase on the fuel tax. So I don't think he's saying...and this is my interpretation, I think, and I think trustee McCallum was asking the same thing in regards to the other gas station, is that the...is let's see what the effect of that tax does and what that does for your funds and before the board decides to increase it another penny. You know, this is a board decision, I as the attorney, I have, you know, I really have no vote or really an impression and opinion at all. It's whatever that they...the board hopefully feels is best for citizens. But I think that's what trustee Brooks means. I don't want to speak for him, but that's what I just wanted to make sure you understood that.
...the lawyer thing, whatever the board thinks, because you guys are more than we do. We're just frustrated because our streets and loudings need correction right now. So I think that's what I'm thinking about. When I hear some kind of change coming in here, when I say change, I mean money, you know what I mean? When I hear some kind of money coming up in here, I'm looking to do something with it. We have trees that are falling down every time there's a storm, every time there's snow. These driving trees are falling down. None of these things are being taken care of. So when I hear some money coming through, I get up because I'm an artist. I'm not hyped about these things. So, but you guys, you know better, you know far better than I do, so take care of this. But I'm just expressing myself about the need to do something in this village. Take care of this is what you're doing.
Yes, and Ms. Morgan, you are 100% correct. And I don't know if we heard, if you heard me say it, it doubled. So yes, it's...you have, well, you have more than just 250,000 coming in. You have almost a half a million coming into this village. So, yeah, so we are moving forward. We're just having a discussion is, would it be an impact, a penny impact, on the residents? Or would the residents have a problem if they see Speedway at 103 or that extra penny, and then they prefer to just go over to BP just because it's a penny? Because, you know, like I know, the first thing they're going to say, the trustees voted for it, boycott it. And, you know, that was just my opinion, but believe me, when I vote, I vote for everybody, not just one person.
Mayor, may I be recognized? Yes, yes, trustee.
Okay. Just to clear that, I want to make sure I'm understanding, so it's already at 2 cents? And we asking to raise it 1 cent? Is there an estimate of how much that 1 cent would actually provide for the village, for our roads?
Ballpark figured about 700, maybe.
Okay.
And the average road to get repaired properly, just the ballpark estimate on average, I think it's over $500,000 just for one...
Six.
Yeah, just for one road. So the motor fuel tax helps, but it really doesn't cover the expenses just on one street.
Absolutely. So even with the increase as of July 1st from 250,000 to 500,000, we're still in a huge deficit in regards to repairing all the roads that need to be repaired in the village. So this 1% increase could potentially bring another 700,000 for our roads in the village of University Park. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? And this is just for discussion again, no actions being taken. But the objection is whether we're going to move this forward to the agenda for the next meeting to take action on it. That's the whole purpose of this discussion. Okay? So, one second, I recognize you. So what is the concurrence of the board on whether we're going to move it forward for action to the next agenda? Or are we going to sit still?
I vote to move it forward 1 cent to fix the roads.
Concurrent? Okay, it's going to be moved to the agenda. Yes, personally.
So my...from hearing what you all said, there's two things that you can do. You can vote to move forward to raise money, because as you know, just like I know, if I see 302 and 303 and boards and 302 on there.
That's right.
You all don't get any money from BP at all. What I would do if I were you all is I would do a marketing campaign showing that BP doesn't pay anything to the village so that the village will support Speedway. That way, the money that's coming up to Speedway will increase, BP's revenue will go down, and then they will be forced to come to the table and talk to you. That's what I would do.
Thank you. Item F2C, discussion, a resolution of the Village of University Park, Will and Cook Counties, Illinois, in order to pull the jurisdictional transfer of certain property and optimizing the execution of a George additional transfer agreement by and between the Village of University Park and Will County. Is anybody familiar with this?
Yes, that's the...for the state, is that part with the state? Take up what part of the road?
Well, no, not the state.
I'm sorry, the county.
I petitioned Will County to take back the road, which is from Western to O'Money Road. And the reason for that is that University Park has decreased in manpower, and that road is sometimes could be a financial burden. It's increased our spending to maintain the road. Will County once had the road, and it was always maintained, plowed, properly taken care of. This is an additional expense that the burden, that the village does not have to have the burden of anymore. So that was the purpose of the meeting, and this is why this is up for discussion. Now, Will County has agreed to take the road back. By Will County taking the road back, they're responsible for the maintenance as far as street repair, snow plowing, and everything else. And it's only from Western Avenue to O'Money where Pine Lake entrance is. And, you know, we increased, for some reason down, or some time ago, we increased our responsibilities, but decreased our manpower and our revenue. So this is, in my opinion, a smart move to start getting some money back in our community and start doing things a little bit, little bit better, fiscally responsible. So that opens up the discussion.
Yes, Mayor, I'll give mine. I clearly understand. The only thing is, is that I have very little faith in Will County, especially when it comes to plowing. I know that we, I think we got our discussed, or are supposed to come into a discussion about the road improvement. They told us 10%, when normally we just paid 20%, so they're going to pay that other 10%. In which, to be honest, I mean, we can't fulfill that 20%, but the one thing I would say is that especially when it comes to the wintertime, we still go all the way out to I-57, and we still cover a lot of grounds. I do believe, Mayor, we're going to get better, the revenue come in. At 2021, TIF 5 does expire. That's a couple million coming into our pockets right there. And we're only talking two years out. And to be honest, to me, the way I see it is that with us going from, or it really is a short stretch. That's why we purchased all those five-ton trucks last year to try to keep up with the pace. And I have witnessed at times where, because for those who don't know, state takes care of your north-south street, east-west is always by the county. Yeah, yeah, county. And so I have witnessed times as an officer where the state, I mean, the county just does not keep up what they're supposed to be doing when it comes to snow plowing. And the village may end up plowing anyway. And actually, it may be a situation, Mayor, where you driving down the street and see that, hey, I need Public Works to take care of this. But that was the reason of the five-ton trucks, ladies and gentlemen, because we go from Western all the way to I-57. The main thing I would say that would benefit us is indeed this county taking or trying to deal with the road repairs. But if I think we're two years out of a couple million coming in, and like Ms. Morgan was making the point, this money and revenue that we have been waiting and asking for, we have been patient. God says, wait, be patient. I'm just being honest, TIF 5 will expire 2021. Whether I'm here or not, I will be happy for the village knowing that 2 million is, at minimum, is rolling into our funds to keep the road repair going. So we still will be able to handle the...because the mayor is, the mayor has been working on funding for to get the roads fixed. This won't be if we say no or yes, it doesn't matter. He's going to continue to apply for grants to get it done. But mostly when he apply for the grants, everyone wants 20% from his village. So we will have funding, and definitely in the future for this. But I want to also say that, you know, we are growing, and that I just don't see really much of a difference with that with us already controlling Western all the way to I-57. No, from Western, all the way to I-57, going from east to west. So what I'm saying is from Western all the way to I-57 belongs to us. I would not give away...I have my driveway, why would I give away my front walk to the county? That's the way I see it, Mayor. But I just feel that we moving forward, and then TIF 5, you know, with it expiring, we'll have a couple million into the general fund. We'll be able to match some of those grants that you'll be applying for to fix the road.
Mayor, may I be recognized, please? And you know what, just... Yeah, just for the record, you know, what Will County used to do in the past, there's a whole different relationship established right now. Will County is willing to work with the participators. Plus, we'll get a significant amount of money that they have agreed to with this jurisdictional transfer. And we just hold people accountable. Public Works is hoping that this goes through. It's just their burden. They don't have the manpower to maintain that. They can be putting their concentration inside the community. Mr. Byter was extremely pleased that Will County would be glad to take this road back. It's been a burden, we don't have, right now is what counts. It's good to say what the future lies ahead, but right now is what the people need to, you know, to move around. We, at Public Works, when I worked in Public Works, we had 18, 19, 20 in Public Works. And even then, it was a pleasure for us to have Will County plow that road. That was something that we can depend on. So a small stretch from Western Avenue to O'Money Road, which would be responsibility solely of Will County. I think, just personally, I think it's a great idea. I think it puts our manpower and workforce in areas, more concentrated areas in the residential area, where people really want to get out their driveways and have access to the roads. You know, I've been doing this for some time, and I was really disappointed that that road was taken for the purposes that it was taken for, from Will County, for the purposes of a parade route. It was, that was the only purpose that the road was taken back from the municipality using our home rule authority. So in reality, it didn't make sense from the start to take the road back and give us an additional burden on the road. So if you want to know the history on it, that's why the road was taken back.
All right. Trustee, Mayor?
Yes.
I would just like to acknowledge the fact that Public Works did a phenomenal job this past winter. And because I have to go out on the roads early in the morning, early in the morning, and they have more than adequately taken care of this road in all the snowstorms, right? All the snowstorms. And I think by giving up this particular road would be, you know, it wouldn't serve to our advantage of doing this. Giving away part of our town to the county, I don't think is the best thing. Because when we needed, we need the director of Public Works to take care of our roads, he handled everything.
Do you know what the cost of overtime was? Statistically speaking, the overtime was phenomenal, just on the maintenance of the road. So I'm just looking at cost-effective ways, you know. And, you know, and they might have done a fantastic job, but they would be worn down. And if you took your numbers and do the statistics from the last couple of years, it just, the money just didn't match, the manpower just didn't match. I got you.
May I be recognized?
Yes, trustee.
So to, does this cost anything to the village to make the transfer over to Will County taking it over?
No, actually, it's to benefit.
Okay, so it doesn't cost anything. Does, so say if Will County was moving slow on the snowplow, on the snow plowing, can our village still plow the streets for the residents? Maybe would that be an issue? If they needed to, say it was a Sunday morning and they was moving slow, can we still get out?
Yeah, yeah, it wouldn't be exactly.
Okay. And then they're going to, they're going to help with the fixing? They're going to be responsible for the fixing of that particular section, the maintenance of the road? So I mean, to me, it seems like it's just more help with the road. If it's not a situation where we can't plow the road, if we need to help plow the road, it's like we have a backup plan, and as the money rolls in off the TIF, I think it'd just make us more sufficient. And as the money rolls in off the TIF, I think it, it'll just make us more sufficient on the road. I don't see any, I don't, I don't, I don't personally see any cons, I only see pros. Uh, that's my thoughts.
And, and you know what, what really, and that's a good comment, trustee. What, 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 what it really does, it increases our manpower. It increases our manpower without cost. That's basically what it does.
May I be recognized, Mayor?
Oh, okay.
I just, I just wanted, I just wanted to ask what would be the financial benefit to the village for that small strip?
Yeah.
To give it to Will County?
Yes.
I mean, what do we gain from that, other than the fact you're saying manpower and possible overtime hours?
That's a good answer.
But I don't, I just don't understand the benefit we can.
Yeah, yeah. One second, I'm looking at it.
Yeah, I, I also wanted to just say, Mayor, that, um, I, I'm more of believing that we control our own.
Yes.
Um, uh, right now, we control our speed limit. You all had lowered the speed limit out here to thirty-five from forty when the county had it. Um, I just, I just personally feel that, and this is TIF six, that when we begin to develop, that would be our role.
Right.
And that we still will have control over it, um, when it comes down. Because I'm just gonna be honest, once that one TIF expired, once that one TIF expired, our, our role, this is gonna boom. And I just, the benefit, the benefit is, is yes, the county, the county will be repaired, or, you know, they may repair it right now, they may have that benefit of, okay, if they fix it now, we didn't have to spend no money. But in the future, also, I seen something in here about our trucks. Now, when I was Police and Fire Commissioner, we had a truck enforcement officer that I worked day and night to hire. For whatever reason, our financial crisis caused that truck enforcement officer to be gone. Now, with the county, the trucks can come in. But with us, the same way like Moni, they have their restriction, their main street is restricted to those trucks. We're the same way. If we still kept that road and maintained it, the problem come in trustee is that we did not get a chance to get our truck enforcement officer. Deputy Chief Wilson, I just spoke with you maybe not too long ago, because the academies were just dead lock full, correct? And we could not even get a truck certified officer. So my point is this, trustee, is that if we kept that road, and I don't wanna seem like we playing Monopoly here, but a truck enforcement officer can rock in two million dollars right out here. The problem we have is that we're so understaffed of them rolling down this road, there's a seven hundred and fifty dollar fine just alone for rolling down this road right now. But if county take over, they can do it. Yeah, so in a way, it benefit us to keep it, because we would be able to take care, take control of our road the same way Main Street in Moni does. And we know in Moni, you better not go over twenty-five miles per hour. Everybody know that strip. And I feel we should somewhat get the same way, this is just, and remember, this is just discussion. I really feel this thirty-five mile per hour, I don't think people are really honoring that. I really feel that with home rule, we can go down one more, at least five miles per hour, because them little kids are running out across the route there. And they're not slowing down. But with the county, they can, and if I'm not mistaken, they wanna do studies and so forth. They might push that back, back up to forty, we won't have no control over it.
Well, no, those are, um, go ahead, trustee. Those are great points, uh, trustee Brooks, I appreciate it.
And, okay, and now, check this out. We haven't loaded a, a truck traffic ticket in years. I mean, I don't know if you say years, but I know for some reason, how much money have, uh, Commander Wilson?
I don't know. Off the top of my head, I don't know how much we brought in, we do write on.
I mean, yeah, yeah.
Weekly.
You know, and, 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 and just for the record, because also coming up on the agenda, there's gonna be an OXCAR permitting system, which is gonna probably bring us an additional million dollars where the trucks that come through, as, as we were speaking about, would they require to get permits before they come through regardless on that. So that's gonna bring an additional source of revenue, because our concentration of truck traffic is definitely in our industrial park. The truck traffic right here is very minimal, very minimal, compared to what's going on in our industrial park. Our industrial park averages probably two hundred or more trucks on a daily basis, which they will be required to come in and get a permit as they enter and exit out the community. So it's about raising revenue.
Mr. Brooks, if we give our autonomy away to the, uh, Will County, we will not have the permission to write tickets. Once we get up and going, once, once we get up and going with our, uh, police force and we have a dedicated person to write those tickets, there are several trucks that I see rolling by here at night, right now.
How many, how many officers do we have? See, that's the.
To dedicate that. So I don't think we should give up our autonomy at this point in time. I think we should think about this, uh, widely, because Mr. trustee Brooks is an authority on this. And I really think that we should really weigh this out, all the pros and cons of this.
Well, okay, but you know, and, and think of the, the long run. We need to develop these relationships. See, we can't live in, we can't live in the box anymore. We have to be outside the box. We must work with Will County, whether you like it or not. We've got a thorough airport coming. We need to apply our work to where it needs to be. You know, I sat on this board for twelve years as a trustee. I learned the extreme a lot. I do basically everything I do by numbers and statistics. So when you weigh the highs and ends out, we don't get half as much as we could from our industrial park with our, with our truck traffic. And just a small piece of road, but it's the pleasure of the board. I just wanna make this general conversation so everybody can understand, we increase our manpower and don't have anything to pay for it. And the thing is, and I'm in a government agreement, we can pretty much cater it to their responsibilities on how we need it to work. You know, we gotta give up something to get something sometime. You know, we have to start investing smarter and thinking outside the box. So it's just on the floor for discussion.
Mayor, I just, I, I don't know if, if this was before your election. I believe it was after, was, was it new trustee bolden where there was a transportation meeting? The county, they don't have a problem allowing trucks to go, but I think that was one of the, uh, item that came up. County wants to okay this to be a truck route. And if I'm not mistaken, uh, deputy chief, am I correct? Okay, so me being an officer, I have an issue with that, because we still have our little ones. I'm not saying big trucks, but we know those little kids dart in front. And, you know, they, most of them are weighing about thirteen tons, you know? Uh, they can't stop right away. But, you know, that's, that's the other issue I have with Will County. They should respect, you know, how we feel about our little ones here. And, uh, I just, I just prefer control of what belongs to us. And I do agree with the mayor, we do need to develop relationships. But, you know, I just feel that, you know, it, it may be a little small piece of road, but they also have their own intent of what they wanna do in our community. And I'm not, I just don't wanna quite give it up. You know, I feel we own it, we done came this far, we can try to make it better, you know?
And, and trustee, just, just for the record, I approached Will County about it, they didn't approach me about it. I approached Will County about it. Manager Payton and I went out and trustee Williams actually went out and we went through a, a heck of a bargaining situation to ensure that the village would not be deprived on any economic incentives or opportunities. Whether we own it or not, the trucks and our little kids are still gonna be the same. So if, you know, that doesn't change anything, you know? So, you know, it's up for discussion, we can table it and look at it down the line, but you know, you know, that, that's just up there for discussion.
Yeah, and I think it's good, can I be recognized, Mayor?
Yes, yes.
I think it's good discussion, I'm glad everyone is giving that input, or the ones that are giving that input is giving that input so we can make the best decisions. Um, and, and, and we can agree to disagree on different things, but at the end of the day, make sure that it's for the best interest of the village. So I think this is good discussion, it's made me feel comfortable that it's a topic that is this serious, that we having discussions about it and everybody's giving that input so that we can make the best decisions to ensure that it's the right decision. So I wanna thank everybody up here for giving that input.
So, so, so the pleasure of, of, of the board, if, if to move forward, hold it or table it? And to we can get some, some certain clarity then, that, that one of your concerns, maybe I can address your concerns with them?
Can we hold it?
Tell you?
Yeah, because I definitely wanna know about this.
Because, you know, and, and just for the record, I'm a certified truck, uh, trucking.
I seen it on your wall, jealous here.
Yeah, yeah, so I'm a truck, I'm, I'm a licensed State of Illinois Truck Enforcement Officer, so I'm very up to date on what's going on with, with the law and the truck, in the trucking industry.
He the guy that they hate.
Yeah, so I think we should table it, give us more time to look more.
Okay, so Madam Clerk, the pleasure of the board would be to just to table this item so we can move on. This is, it's supposed to be a short meeting, but it's good to have open dialogue with our, with our community. Yeah, we're just putting it on hold, yes, Madam Clerk. The next item is a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement by and between the Village of University Park and Will County maintenance of a premises. Trustee Brooks, I'm quite sure you got a, a question. This is, this is item F two F.
Yeah, was it, was, Mayor, was this the one that was connected to it though?
This is about the, the, the maintenance and all their responsibilities and everything as well that goes right along with it.
Right, um, if we can.
Just table this one as well?
Yeah, because I see one, two, that E, two F and E G.
Yeah.
Right, they all together, can we just, uh?
We'll just table it, we'll look at it, because this is connected and this definitely defines on what their responsibilities and their additional cost and everything goes along with it, so it's like a twofold thing. So we'll put this one on hold at the board's pleasure. Yeah, let me see if I can put these glasses on. And wait a minute, and, and, and the next one, see, we mentioned that funding again, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement by and between the Village of University Park and Will County allocation of funding. And this is what I was thinking about, because whether, I, I don't know if I didn't say it, but they're also wanting to pay a part of our grant money that we have with, uh, I think it's twenty percent. They'll do the twenty percent, they'll do the match for Robinson Engineering for the road repair that we've got the grant for. So that's where the funding would've came in with Will County. That's all a part of this agreement and that's why I thought it was a, a very, a very good thing. Because I don't know if we have the additional match for the grant. So this was another part of the bargaining deal that would've guided us, the jurisdictional transfer, which would've relieved some of the burden of us. And these things, you know, sometimes you just gotta make these hard decisions and hold people accountable for the, for the actions that we take. Because we, you know, so we don't move this forward, then where's our funding going for the repair of University Parkway? Open up, board of trustees?
Oh, you mean the funding?
Yeah. That's I F two G.
Right, but that, that intertwined though, right? With the, Mayor, yeah, that's why, I mean, no, from my understanding, it was, I mean, we can look through it, but I, I thought my understanding here, that I comprehended correctly, that they would pay that ten percent, but we had to pay our ten, so that would be the twenty on that item.
Right, right.
Right, right. So, right, the village shares, the federal funding is eighty percent, the village would pay ten percent and the county shares ten percent. And just my opinion, you know, if you wanna take over the road, pay the whole bill. You know, that's how I feel with them, since you wanna turn it to a truck route, but.
It's not gonna be a truck route, it doesn't qualify.
It does, it doesn't? Because they, because I'm gonna tell you, they, they'll come here and they'll sneak, I got pictures. They sneak right here and then cut down to dodge Moni.
And if I'm not mistaken, prior to me leaving the board as a trustee, I thought that we had a designated truck route for the purpose of T and, uh, TS and M.
That's the only one, because these, yeah.
Truck route only for repair.
They keep tearing up, uh, Drolly Road. If, uh, if anyone rolled down Drolly Road, these trucks, they're tearing up Drolly Road, so they come up through here, turn, and then sneak up through Drolly Road. I think that road didn't even last a week. So, you know, some of them lie to say it with their GPS, but I will say, uh, Deputy Chief, your, your officers one morning, he popped off three trucks within an hour. They, they'll come flying through here, so, um, but yeah, if, if, that, uh, that's just my opinion, Mayor. If they intertwine, if we can just.
It's, it's one pizza with the cheese and sausage and everything mixed together. So we'll put, we'll put this on hold, but just to let you know the whole, the whole mechanism, you know, how it operates. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, it looks like we're finally about to close this thing out, we've got the bills payable. Oh, we need a motion to table it.
Yeah, Mayor, I'm motion to, uh, table, uh, the bills, uh, payable until next board meeting.
Uh, questions? Will call Madam Clerk? Right, 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 just now. Vote, vote tie. Okay. Reporters, board of trustees, village clerk, manager, board officials, police and commissions, announcing the scheduled meetings. Madam Clerk has none, any trustees? None? Well, I, I, I do have just a few comments. First of all, you know, we're in the midst of a water crisis that's deeply affecting our, our residents in our community. It's affecting me as well as everybody else, and I just wanna let everybody know, it's a burden to me as well. But what we have been doing, we've been working hand in hand overseeing the project with not just OAK, with Illinois Environmental Protection Agency, the U S EPA, and the process has been taken care of. Yes, I'm responsible for it, but I want people to understand and realize that University Park is a great place to live, a great place to raise your family, a great place to get an education, great amenities, a public and a private golf course, a beautiful Pine Lake, a four-year university, and so much more that's here in that hometown. We will get through this. We're gonna turn tragedy into triumph and together we can do these things. So it's frustrating as, to me as well, have no doubt whatsoever. I only do not consume advisory, I have grandchildren and future generations in this community as well. And it's deeply and greatly concerning to me, but I know that the process is going forward. Are we gonna let Aqua get away? Absolutely not, we're gonna hold him to the fire. And Mr. Blanchard is here to give us updates. I get updates just about every single day. I have a conference with EPA, I EPA every Monday at two P M. And they're confident that the process that they're taking is moving the community forward. So those are my comments to stay encouraged, the residents of University Park. We'll get through this, we'll come through this better than it was before we went into this, okay? So that, that, that's my only comments for the night. And I'm so proud of our residents, because this is a community with very vibrant, smart individuals with the variety of resources and intelligence that we don't even realize what we have right here. We're a diamond in the rough and it's time to shake off the rust off of our diamond, move this community forward. We've got Coretta Scott Middle School right here, our high school is fabulous, most kids go to Cremoni, they go off to college. They're athletically extremely well. You know, we've got great, great, great things, so let's not just put a black eye on our community, all right? So let's together, let's speak a positive language, because we know this still is in God's hands and God makes no mistakes whatsoever, and we'll get through this, all right? I had a speech prepared out, but I wanna speak from my heart, because my heart is here invested in this community. And that, those are my only comments for the night.
Yeah, Mayor, just let's not forget the condolences of Manager Payton, uh, auntie who lived to be seventy-two.
Ninety.
Ninety?
Ninety-two.
Ninety-two. Ninety-two.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
All right, go ahead, thank you.
Right, the funeral was today, so it's too, too late, but it was the wake and he was gonna try to come, I guess. I just seen an email last, so we all understand. So our prayers are with Manager Payton, with all he do, he just wouldn't show up tonight. It's, it was for a good reason, he's not here.
Okay. Anybody else? Uh, Chief? You know what, I do wanna say one more thing and down the line, I think our Public Works Department, our Fire Department, Police Department, she all be trained in Thursday, so deliver food for thought. Because Public Works, what do you realize, are not another branch of first responders. So if Public Works is out riding the street and they happen to see somebody passed out, you wanna be able to help those people. So just food for thought, Chief, let's get Public Works CPR certified, let all the employees in this village be CPR certified. Is there a motion?
So will?
All in favor? Thank you so much.